Okay, the time is now six thirty. Welcome, welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for a beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P. M. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Please remember to announce your name and address if you, when you address the council. Right now, we're going to have our volunteer clerk, Evy Anderson, to do real call.
Count.
Here.
Okay, Councilman Simeon White.
Here.
Councilman Brian Vincent.
Here.
Councilman Terry Fowler.
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sinkovick.
Here. And quorum is confirmed. At this time, we're going to have Pastor Kevin Kelly of the Poetry Baptist Church lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord Jesus, you have been our dwelling place through all generations, before the mountains were born, before you brought forth the earth and the world. From everlasting to everlasting, you are God. You return mankind to dust, saying, "Return, O offspring of mortals, for in your sight a thousand years are but a day that passes or a mere watch of the night." You whisk us away in our sleep; we are like the new grass of the morning. In the morning, it springs up new; by evening, it fades and withers. Therefore, teach us to make our days count so that we may demonstrate a heart of wisdom. Return, O Lord, how long will it be? And have compassion on your servants. Satisfy us in the morning with your loving devotion that we may sing for joy and be glad all of our days. Make us glad for as many days as you have given us, for as many years as we have seen evil. Reveal your work to your servants and your glory to our children. May the delight of the Lord our God rest upon us as you establish the work of our hands. Yes, Lord Jesus, we pray that you alone would establish the work of our hands. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, under items of community interest, I just want to have a shout-out to Poetry Baptist Church for allowing us use of this facility. Faith Temple is still awaiting, I think, their air conditioning unit, so it's not fully in place. And so, we're grateful for the air conditioning. Thank you so much. July, this Saturday, we have a community workday for the annex, nine to noon. There's some cleanup. We have to move things and prep for moving the building. That's this Saturday, nine to noon. We also received our no-through truck road signs. So, here is an example of one. So, we have to install those and on the county roads, nine of the county roads, which were approved by council. So, we have one for each end. And talking with a driver, he's like, "Can you please just put them at the beginning of the road, not a hundred yards into the road? Because by that time, we've already made the turn." And so, we'll look at the regulations and then, I suppose, try and accommodate that as much as possible. So, we are looking for volunteers. If we don't get volunteers to do that, then we'll have to look at hiring someone for that, I suppose.
To do what specifically?
To install these signs. So, if you know how to dig holes and know how to put up signs, we're looking for volunteers. Okay, under G, receive reports and discuss the following, our financial report for June twenty twenty-two. This is our bank balance of June end. So, we had a beginning balance of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-three cents. We had deposit. We had a generous donation from a citizen on twenty-four fifty. She said, "Please repair our road." It's two hundred dollars. Encore Franchise Fee Revenue, forty-five, sixty-eight, ninety-one. FEC didn't come until July, or it was written before, in June, but it wasn't deposited until July. Withdrawals, we bought the signs, the poles and the brackets, nineteen seventy-five. Checks paid, we paid Messer Fort McDonald eighteen hundred dollars. The Kaufman County check finally cleared for thirty-five, fifty-seven. Print time for the newsletter, for the website, and building insurance, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Faith Temple Baptist Church, fifty. And we have an ending bank balance of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Our current bank balance is at forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen with the, with this for July. So, just so you know. All right, so we have in a second report on here, we had, we've had a lot of questions and misinformation regarding, I've had all kinds of phone calls about the property IDs being split out for Kaufman County, and some folks are alarmed at that and thinking that their taxes are going to go up just merely because of that. So, I made a call to Coy Johnson, the Kaufman County Deputy Appraiser, on June the twenty-seventh, and he said that there may be errors, but the change in property ID does not change anything on tax liability. It doesn't change homestead or agriculture exemption, exemption is still applied the same. And again, he said there no, there may be errors, which there always are, but that division of the property ID should not change anything in itself. And I think Councilmember Vincent also talked with him.
Yeah, as the only council member that lives in Kaufman County, I was also there at the appraisal district for my own personal property tax dispute, so I talked to Coy as well. Very, he's a very helpful guy, so if you have questions, yeah, feel free to call the appraisal district. But two main things came out of it. One, if your exemptions are not what you expected them to be, if you had, by clerical error or whatever, an exemption was removed or changed or something like that, as it was for me, then call their exemptions office and they can work with you. You do not have to have previously filed a dispute on your taxes for that. So, that's an important consideration. If your exemptions are not what they should be, you don't have to file a dispute during the dispute window. You can still call them, talk to them. Secondly, when the properties were divided and it's interesting, because I had the appraisal board member tell me that the town had requested that the properties be split, and I was like, "I can assure you, we didn't. I'm on the council. I know we didn't put anything out there for you guys to do this. So, you did it for your own convenience." And so, we had a little bit of a discussion there. We'll put it. But anyway, your property probably did not get split exactly fifty-fifty. You know, the, what's in the town is not exactly fifty percent of your overall property, but they most likely spit, split your exemptions fifty-fifty. So, if you call and talk to the folks about your exemptions, then they can reallocate your exemptions based on the amount of property actually involved. So, if your front half was seventy-five percent, your back half is twenty-five percent, then they can reallocate that. And they did, Coy did that for me on the fly, right there while I was in the office, and it actually resulted in about another two thousand dollar savings in the assessed value. So, that is definitely something worth pursuing as well. So, that's on the, on the high level. If your exemptions are off, it's, you know, you could still ask them to fix it. The town did not request this at all, and if I had any clue that this was going to be the mess that it was, we would have definitely requested not to do it. But, and again, they're, they're pretty strangely sane from me. They're pretty helpful down there. So, give them a call and work through.
Okay, so, on the consent agenda, thank you. All right, so, on the consent agenda, we have the minutes for April seventeenth of the regular town council meeting. And I will shout-out to Sherri Benson. She did the lion's share of work on this, so thank you, Sherri. We appreciate that so much. So, it takes hours to do this, so I just really appreciate that. So, all those in favor?
I'd like to move number two to the regular agenda and number four. Number two is missing general comments, and number four is a legal document I'd like to talk about.
Okay. So, but we're on this one, number one. Is there any?
Well, consent agenda, we pass them all at once, so.
No.
No?
No, no. Individually, yeah. So, they're individual items. So, on number one, and I hear you, we'll, we'll, we can move those. But for number one, on April nineteenth, the minutes for April nineteenth?
Seventeenth.
Pardon?
It says seventeen.
Seventeenth.
Oh, it does. So, there is a typo, but it is the ninth. Nineteenth, okay. So, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Raise your hand. And that passes unanimously? All right, and then, there's been a request to move May seventeenth and number, so number four, number two, to the regular agenda, so we can do that. So, the minutes for the June twenty-first. There's four pages of that. All those in favor of passing those minutes as written? And that passes unanimously? Okay, so moving on to the regular agenda, we'll go ahead and discuss the minutes for May seventeenth. Did you have an amendment?
I just had a citizen request that we edit those for general comments. There was no general comments under? Yes, seventeenth, May seventeenth, minutes.
Okay, it is left blank. Oh, to add what that was?
Yeah, so we can just bring it back next time with the revision.
Okay, yeah, I don't know off the fly what that is. Okay. Any other suggestions on that? And I don't remember, sometimes we don't have a lot of general comments, so.
I guess the citizen asked for it, so.
Okay. All right, so, we'll go ahead and postpone that to next time. Number four, the easement agreement for access with Longhorn Organics.
And I just wanted to review, I can't remember what exactly we changed on that.
So, I've highlighted the changes after talking with Holly Dempsey, the owner. So, I've highlighted, because we voted to make these changes.
Right, I remember, but.
And so, I can read that if you'd like. So, the added part is under easement property. It says, "And access to the parking lot from County Road three twenty through three across the dominant estate property driveway terminating at the three hundred and eleven foot mark." And then, under easement purpose, it says, "For providing free and uninterrupted, uninterrupted pedestrian and vehicular ingress." And then, the third addition was, their utility easement is not ten foot, as it was previously said, it was actually twenty foot. So, those three modifications were the only ones that, that I made after talking with her. Is they have not, you know, they had not seen this, and we just went over some of it, and they're actually not back in town. They're, and they're actually on the East Coast right now, so they'll be back in town tomorrow, I believe, and they could sign, because it has to be notarized as well. So, I just wanted to make sure on our end that you all approve that. Any other comments or on that?
So, just for clarification, that easement is that full width of that? I guess the driveway and that section to the west that's grassy, when we, is that, is that, I just want to make sure we're clearly defining that.
So, we have, we have access to the driveway, but then the easement is on the left side of the driveway, and it's like thirty-two feet. But under that thirty-two feet of parking is a twenty-foot, there is a twenty-foot utility easement, so. And they've been gracious to allow us to use that with, so.
And the uninterrupted access by vehicle or foot, that was to address the citizen concern?
Okay, so, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, this is regular agenda, so do we have a motion to accept this?
If it's regular agenda, should we go ahead and have citizen comment?
Probably. But we did discuss this last time already, so it's, it's like it has been allowed for citizen comment, so.
I'd still be in favor of hearing if anybody has further comment.
Okay, we'll move this to the back of, after a break. So, if you did want to sign up for the new, we'll call it A, to do with the easement, easement agreement, then we'll give opportunity for citizen comment, and that will be immediately after the break.
Thank you.
Okay, so, on the regular agenda, number one, we have, "Discuss and consider a resolution denying the August first, twenty twenty-two effective date of the proposed change in rates as submitted by Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC on or around May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, or discuss and consider a resolution suspending the August first, twenty twenty-two effective date of the proposed change in rates as submitted by Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC on or around May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two." So, here to decipher all that is Cindy Tanyan from Encore. She's having to go around to multiple municipalities and kind of explain what this is all about, because it is rather confusing.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Tanyan with Encore. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening. Every four years, Encore has to file a full rate review with the Public Utility Commission of Texas. The last one we had was in two thousand and seventeen, so we were really on schedule to do this last year. But with the winter storm last year and turnover at the PUC and so forth, our case was deferred to this year, and we were told to file before June first. So, we filed on May the thirteenth. The case that we filed would result in an increase to the typical residential customer of about six dollars and two cents per month. When we file a case, the cities who have retained their original jurisdiction in ratemaking have to make a, or have to take action by a certain date, which in this case is August first. We always recommend that you deny our case. Now, why would we file a case and then ask you to deny it? I think we talked about some of this when we were talking about the franchise negotiations, that we have system-wide rates. The PUC has appellate jurisdiction over all of the cities. And so, as the cities deny the case, we appeal that, and it rolls into one case that the PUC then hears for, on behalf of all of our customers over our entire service area. So, there, there is another option you could take. You can deny the case, or you can suspend. Some cities suspend because they want to take a longer time to consider the case. They, they may be in a group that has attorneys that are studying the case for the, for the hearings. The timeline's already been set, but some other cities have already suspended, so at this point, you know, the timeline is set, we're only, they're only going to hear one case, and so that set, sets the timeline on that. So, actually, those cities who suspend have to come back within ninety days to deny it. So, if you deny it tonight, you have taken your final action on it. If you suspend, you will have to come back within ninety days to deny it. I'll be happy to try to answer questions.
It seems like there would be a third option, not that I'd say we would exercise it, but of approve.
We would, we would appeal that as well. And the reason why is, the PUC wants us to have system-wide rates, and so we wouldn't want rates in one city that were different from everyone else.
Okay, so, historically, right, right now, you're saying there's an average of six dollars and two cents per month. Historically, once the PUC gets involved, do you expect that that would go down from that six oh two, or that it would go up from that six oh two?
I would not expect it to go up. Normally, in, from my past experience, it's normally less than that.
Does the PUC regulate the co-ops as well?
You know, I hate to speak with the co-ops, because I don't know so much about them. I know that, from a ratemaking standpoint, I don't believe so. Now, they have, they, the co-ops do have to turn in certain reports to the PUC, but the PUC does not regulate them in the same manner that we're regulated.
Why would the PUC want the cities to get in between the provider and the end user? I mean, why would we vote to deny y'all's ability to charge what, what y'all feel is necessary to run your company?
Because that's the only way to, for us to be able to appeal it and make it roll into one case for them to hear and, and make it a uniform rate for their entire, our entire service area.
Let's see where you're going there. It, it sounds like the PUC is creating busy work for everybody else.
So, when we deny, we're denying a rate increase?
Correct.
Okay, so, in this economy, I think that's a no-brainer, but that's just me.
But these people in Encore also have the ability to shop their own provider, or?
That is correct.
Yeah, provider.
That is correct. Now, the Encore portion of your bill is still regulated. But you do have the ability to shop your provider to get the best rate you can overall.
So, unlike co-ops that I'm on, I get to pay what they tell me I'm going to pay?
The co-ops were given the ability to opt out of deregulation.
So, I guess I was confused. I thought you were saying we should suspend, or you're now saying, no, we should deny? And I'm just confused about what I was listening to.
Suspending will not buy you anything, actually. Some larger cities who want to, there are some cities who are part of a steering committee that have attorneys that represent them for the case, and, and they suspend so that they can have more time to, to study the case in advance. But that has already been done by many of those cities, and so, we're not going to hear your case before their case. It's all going to be heard as one case. So, at this point, for you to suspend, all that's going to do is make you have to come back and deny it within ninety days.
So, we should, so we should deny then?
If you deny tonight, then you're through with it.
Okay, thank you.
What is, what is the third option of taking no action?
That would be deemed, deemed as approving the rates, and we would have to appeal that as well.
I have a hard time telling you what your rate should be.
Well, that's why the PUC is there. They will study this with a fine tooth comb.
So, I'll make a motion, we deny the rate increase.
How about if we had some public comment?
Okay, so, okay, we, okay, so Chad West? Kenzie Salisbury? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Chad DeLita? Is he here? Yeah, I don't see him. How did he sign up?
Maybe online.
No, he didn't sign up online. All right, so.
Want to call him one more time, just to make sure?
Yeah, Chad DeLita, are you here? Okay, he's not here. I don't know how he signed up, if he's not here. You have to be present to sign up. You have to be present to sign up. That's the only other option. You can email, which you, you did, Mr. McFarland, but there was only one other person who did that. Okay, so, all right, so, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the resolution by, submitted by Encore Electric Delivery, and it is seconded by council member.
I just, I just want to make sure the, that wording is, you said you want to make a motion denying the resolution? I think the motion is to have the resolution denying the increase.
Okay, so, like he said, so we have a motion to consider denying the effective date, the proposed change in rates, as submitted by Encore Electric Delivery Company, and that has been made by Anderson and seconded by Vincent. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Cindy, for explaining that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, number two, we have discussed and considered the HO three project for pothole repair on the following roads, CR twenty-four fifty, CR twenty-four fifty-four, CR twenty-four thirty-two, CR twenty-four sixty, CR twenty-four hundred, and CR twenty-four thirty for the amount of eighteen hundred dollars for material cost. So, we have some citizens that would like to speak. Robin Followwill? Forgive me if I'm not pronouncing that correctly.
No, it is, it's Followwill.
Okay.
So, my name is Robin Followwill. I live on twenty-four hundred. A lot, and I've lived out here, you know, almost ten-plus years. My husband's lived here since two thousand, so, anytime there's been pothole repairs on twenty-four hundred, they're like maybe the first quarter mile. So, because I live, when you turn on twenty-four hundred and you go down, and then you make the big corner, from that point, all the way to where it stops being paved at twenty-three, twenty-two, it's like there has never been repairs. The road is very, very uneven and cracked, there's potholes, and I can, not just in a car, I'm probably the people y'all see out every, or Saturday or on Sunday, busting off ten miles and walking these roads. And I can honestly tell you, that is, from my driveway down to the twenty-three, twenty-two, and all the way till we get almost up to where you turn off twenty-four hundred, is the roughest road out of all the roads that I walk out here. So, I'm just asking to please go past and around the big corner if you're going to put, if you're going to repair potholes on twenty-four hundred.
So, Robin, our jurisdiction only ends at twenty-four, twenty-six. So, the Town of Poetry jurisdiction ends at twenty-four, twenty-six, so it doesn't go very far. So, so our, so if you were to, I think, I think, I believe, your, your section of the road, and I agree with you, it is pretty rough, that would fall under Hunt County?
Well, I pay taxes, we pay taxes in both.
You would have to call Hunt County.
So, we pay taxes for Hunt and Kaufman.
Okay, you would have to pay Hunt, Hunt County, that's Hunt County jurisdiction. So, you would have?
So, is it just like the first quarter on twenty-four hundred?
So, it's, the jurisdiction for the Town of Poetry goes only to twenty-four, twenty-six, and, and I'm not exactly sure where your road is, but it sounds like, I think Jeffy would know.
Twenty-three, twenty-two is on your right, twenty-four, twenty-six is a dirt road on your left, just past it.
Okay.
But I think you're back this way, right? You're away from.
So, if you're on twenty-three, twenty-six, and you turn onto twenty-four hundred, like going to your house? I'm past your house.
How far?
Down, around that big corner. So, so is your, is yours part of Poetry? Because I know you're the first driveway.
Yes, ma'am. It goes, so the twenty-four hundred goes, our jurisdiction had to end somewhere. It ends at twenty-four, twenty-six, so you go around that corner, and then just a little ways before, what is that name of that road that you're on, Joe?
You're included. Are you, Ken Phillips is on the corner, right? He's got the curb with a nice pipe fence, and how many driveways?
If you pass his, if you pass his house, there's a driveway. We have the big stone driveway, we're right there.
Right next to Keith, Keith Powell's. Yeah, they're in.
You think that's in? Okay.
Well, half of that road's in. We don't have the other side of the road.
Well, the part that, where it ends, the pavement, is where I believe it actually ends.
I agree with you. I've, I've walked it before on foot, it's hard to walk.
It's very hard to walk, but where the pavement ends and is where the dirt road for twenty-three, twenty-two, you know where that road is, but that's where the pavement ends, and part of that is what falls under the jurisdiction. And part of that is what falls under the jurisdiction. But that's, I'm just asking, can, if, since it does fall under it, can we please at least make sure we pay that part? Cause like he's, can testify, the road is...
I, I'm not sure.
What's your address?
One zero six five eight, County Road twenty-four hundred.
I don't think she's by Ken Phillips.
We're looking on the map.
Okay, well, the big corner has that big, huge, piped, beautiful fence, yeah.
And then there's the winged light.
Okay, so, so, um, yes, we, if, so, we plan to have, now, I know last time Randy went even past our jurisdiction, and he was like, we, we went through all that, all that money. And then so I'm like, well, yeah, I know you, you actually went past. So, um, yes, noted, and yes, ma'am, we will, um, be on that to make sure.
Thank you.
On a side note, you shouldn't pay Kaufman, uh, Kaufman County taxes, school taxes.
We pay both.
You pay school taxes.
School taxes.
So the county taxes would be...
Terrell ISD, like I do. Yeah, it's divided, but yes, ma'am. Thank you for your input. All right, um, Kevin Sinkovich? Chad West? Um, Kenzie Salisbury?
Hi, okay, so I had a question. Um, I saw on the financial report how somebody don't, a citizen donated to repair the County Road twenty-four fifty. And I was wondering how exactly that works, um, where they donate the money to the city? And does that mean that it gets on the project sheet quicker? And if so, is it possible for the citizens to, instead of doing it to the road crew, do it this way, going through the town, so we can ensure that it gets more of a quality repair, if possible? Does that make sense?
She, she offered to, to donate to the volunteer team, um, but I told her that now we're, we're going through the interlocal agreement with the county, so she wrote it to the town. And her road was already onslaughted. There'd been like three or four requests for, on her road already. And so, um, that just goes in the fund, and...
All right, so that's, so that's what everybody needs to start doing going forward, is donate to, or give to the town?
Well...
Versus that road crew?
You know, I, I don't know, I'm not gonna speak for the volunteer team. Um, we're still evaluating, this is only our second pothole repair sheet for Hunt County. We're still kind of evaluating their job, and, um, it might be, I don't know, that'll, that'll be something we'll have to discuss in the future. But, um, so it was two hundred dollars. Her road was already, had already had three or four, um, road reports made, so it was already slotted to be on the, you know, repair. And, but that was, it was a nice gesture.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just didn't know if it would, like, mean we could make the list for the potholes, you know, longer, if we do it that route. You know what I mean?
Um, I don't know.
Like more beneficial.
If the town is accepting a donation, then it's accounting where, you know, it's, it's an accounting feat to make sure that it's properly applied. So, yeah, in my mind, it wouldn't matter if it went to the, uh, the volunteer team for purchasing materials, or if it went to the counties for the purchase of materials, or manpower.
Well, right now, the, the volunteer team is tired, and it's a hundred and eight degrees, so...
Yeah, yeah, I'm not questioning anybody not wanting to be out there right now, I'm just saying...
And a lot of them have hay to haul, and, and, uh, you know...
I'm, I'm just saying, it, it seems like if we had a standardized process, it would be a lot clearer for everybody how to go about it.
Well, the road report, basically, if you follow road report, that gets put on, that, that directly, the road report is how I'm, I just basically look online. And if you're, if you've, well, if you have like three or four complaints for that road, then that gets in the top of the list. And I, I did talk with Randy, um, Straight, and said, no, look, we, and I've driven the roads, and it looks like, you know, twenty-four fifty is one of the worst ones, um, in sections. Um, there's some other ones, but yeah, so just follow the road reports, really.
But you, you had a comment there that, um, was of interest to me. They overperformed, quote-unquote, last time. They, they spent all of it, but they went beyond the scope of work that was described? So are we getting a credit back for that?
No, um, so he said that, um, they did, they did all the expected repairs, and then they did it. Well, they were out there, so I can see logistically, they're out there, so they wanted to go ahead and, um, uncover, but...
And that, that makes perfect sense. The part that doesn't make sense to me is, is spending the money that the town associated with a particular project on something that was not associated with that project. So did they complete the town, did they complete the...
They gifted us more than what was allotted, let's put it that way.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and finish my, my question. Did they complete what we assigned to them, and then, and settle that project? And then give us more above that project? Or did they use money that we assigned to a project for something that was not associated with the project?
So my understanding, after talking with Randy, he said, look, we, we gave you guys about five hundred dollars worth of material, because it took more than what he anticipated. Now, we had a, we had in our escrow like three hundred dollars from the tree trimming project. He said, so we've used all that up, and so, but he said he wasn't that worried about it, and, so...
Okay, thanks.
All right, so, you know, it's not an exact science when you've got holes that are irregularly shaped, and, you know, so...
I guess, adding to what Brian said, though, Tara, I think if, if a citizen makes a, a significant donation, two hundred dollars is, I guess, a third of a truckload of material, then I'm perfectly good as a town with prioritizing their road for repair and putting that money towards the material, and letting the county do it. I don't care that our guys are doing it necessarily, is, you know, and I don't think the citizen cares. They just want their holes filled, so...
So her road is number one on the list?
Right, so her two hundred dollars should go towards that eighteen hundred dollar bill, and she'll get her road fixed. She'll be happy, we'll be happy.
Okay.
Okay, so on, following up on Jaffe, following up on me. Um, was this project sheet originally specked out for two thousand dollars, and we're crediting two hundred from the, the donation? Or was it originally specked out at eighteen hundred dollars, and so we only had sixteen hundred that the town is funding?
Well, the two hundred went into the general fund.
Okay, that, and again, based on my nonprofit experience, I have a little bit of an issue with that. If we have a designated donation, it would be... It would be proper for us to make sure that we are following that donation was designated for. Now, if somebody says it can go to the general fund, I really hope and pray that it goes to my ri, my road, that would be great. But if we're going to accept a designated donation, we need to make sure that we are treating that money as it was intended.
I agree, um, however, we only have one account. We don't have two accounts.
For clarification, I know, I know we get donations in, in the city all the time, for the fire department, especially, we have a big fire base. I go here, thank you. They have to go in the general fund.
They have to go in the general fund?
They have to go in the general fund.
Then...
They can't go into our, you know, we have multiple accounts. They can't go into the firefighter's account.
Then I, I would recommend in some point in the near future, we do a resolution on ordinance, just so that we're clarifying, so that we have full transparency.
Yeah, that was a new, new one. Wasn't sure quite, so...
Now, project based may be something different, but you can't just give it to me.
But her road, um, will be addressed, and, um, Randy estimated the cost, it'd be eighteen hundred dollars, um...
And the town, the town will only have to write a check for sixteen hundred, because two hundred of it has already been covered by the citizen, right?
Well, that, that's what she was just saying. It went into the general fund, so we're still gonna have to write the check for eighteen hundred, but...
But, and in effect, only sixteen hundred is coming sort of out of ours.
Franchise fees, it's only paying for sixteen, and, and the town...
I think the road repair thing is, is a gift. We wanna, we don't wanna make it too onerous, it's...
I mean, she was very flexible. I did explain that would have to go in the general fund. Right now, our, our volunteer crew is taking a siesta. Sabbatical, something.
We still appreciate you guys.
Yes, yes. But, you know, I've actually have had some feedback. Some folks are saying, the volunteer crew was faster and better, but it's too hot right now. So, I don't know. Um, okay, so any other comments? Um, Kevin Sinkovich? Did I already ask this? Uh, Chad West? Kenzie Salisbury? Lori Rasmussen?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on twenty-four fifty. I'm not exactly sure, I mean, I live on the really nice part of the street, so it doesn't pertain to me particularly. But I'm not sure exactly where you're gonna find the potholes, cause there's really no road down there. Okay? So, I mean, that's how bad that road is. It's a mile long, and you've got about a quarter mile of rope. So, I don't know, for anybody that's never been on twenty-four fifty, it is that bad. It is, the road has washed away. If you looked really closely, you could find bits of rope. So when they say they need it, potholes filled, they really don't have a road to fill a pothole. That's how awful the road is.
That may be one of the roads.
There's no potholes to look at for, um, total refurbishment later. Yeah, because, I mean, there's every, every now and then you can find a piece of rope. That's just how bad it is, but personally, I don't have to worry about it.
I did drive that road, and I know driving it, um, I, I hear what you're saying, um...
Because the, the people there that live on that road are actually out of their pocket, paying for one of their neighbors every year to go and fill it with gravel. That's how bad that road is.
I noticed that the, the low, or the upper half, I don't know if it's the half, but upper portion does have a lot of gravel on it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's just a crappy road.
Well, and, you know, um, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so...
All right, so any, um, any other council comments?
I, I do, and I'm not being silly about this, but how do we address that half road on twenty-four hundred?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
How do we address the half road that we own? Is the county gonna do the other half of the road on there? I mean, if you look at our map, guys, it cuts from all the way down the middle of that road, and it's only the properties on the northwest side of that road.
Well, and that's a good question, I think, um...
So hers is in the city, but the other side of the road is not in the cities?
So I think, um, at least Commissioner Straight is very flexible, and he recognizes that he's gonna be out there anyway. So, you know, like, I don't think he's gonna have...
But the question goes back to what Brian asked her. Did he bid this on that whole road, and we only own half of that road?
Yeah, the other half is his. Just tell him it'd be great if he would plan to repair his side on the same day as he repairs our side, so that he doesn't use all our material.
All right, any other comments?
It's not directly related, so I'll hold.
Well, I'll move to approve the...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Fowler, um, seconded by Anderson, to approve the HO three project sheet for Hunt County, um, Commissioner to repair our potholes. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number three, discuss and consider the design and appearance of the approved seven-town entrance signs. So we, in a previously, previous medium, we voted the location, um, but we haven't actually voted on the actual appearance, um, of the entrance signs. So, um, I, um, I was just looking at pricing. I have three potential examples here. One says Town of Poetry, population two thousand sixty-nine, established twenty-twenty, founded eighteen forty-five. And then one's a cream-colored with green. And then, um, it, they are in the packet. And then the third one is just a kind of a green and white. It says, welcome to Poetry, Texas. So, and the price for seven of them is between two, two hundred fifty-five dollars and two hundred and seventy-something. So, seventy-two, two hundred seventy-two. Any thoughts by council on that?
As I recall, one of the questions we had previously was if the state, if Tech Dot was going to install some of the signs, what would be the cost associated with those signs?
So, he said that, um, we, he, they'd install them and provide the poles for that. Um, but he preferred that we buy the actual sign. They have, they have a simple sign, but, um, um, he preferred that we buy the sign, and they would put it in and put the pole in.
Okay, and the simple sign would be the traditional...
It just says...
Poetry City Limit?
It just says, no, it was, he, he sent me a picture, and I sent it in one of the town meetings. It was, it just says Poetry, that, well, it doesn't even say that, the one he sent. Yeah, but he, he sent us, he sent an example, and it would just be like that. It just says Poetry. And it's very narrow.
Terrell says the population as well.
Well, maybe they paid for that, I don't know.
We had some other drawings, I guess, at that last meeting, though, we're not considering those signs any longer?
Yeah, we can, I just ran out of time to, like, do every one of them. Um, and so, and I was looking at prices, too, so...
Those signs are cute and all, but I would rather say Poetry, keep out, you know? Amen.
Aren't you wealth on me? Yeah.
I get purple.
Purple? Purple and yellow?
It's one of the colors of our symbol, purple.
It's also no trespass, though.
Population full, full up.
Yeah, full.
No vacancy. Again, I'm, I'm, I have a very simple design, um, um, design aesthetic, so that's, that's why I leave all design choices to my wife. She's much better than I. So, um, I, I'm a big fan of the, the uniformity of Poetry, City Limit, be done with it. But, um, I'm, I'm willing to be swayed.
So let's hear some from citizens, Chad McFarland?
Chad McFarland, one nine eight five oh FM nine eighty-six. I think we need to go with a traditional sign, too. You look at these others, and it's, I, you know, I, we need to go with a traditional sign. I'm just not gonna get into these other designs, they're just, uh, not worth speaking about.
Thanks, Chad.
I'm not sure what you mean by traditional, does that mean just...
Well, he means just a little, like a candy bar, just a rectangular poetry.
Okay.
The green and white.
Okay, so Kenzie Salisbury?
I agree with what Brian and Mike were saying, smaller the better. Hopefully, nobody even sees them.
Okay, Shelley Smith?
Can you clarify, Shelley Smith, one eight seven three oh FM fifteen sixty-five? Can you clarify where the, the smaller ones provided by the state, are those free?
He said that they would have provided the pole and the installation, but he actually preferred that we, we buy the sign. That way they're, they're all the same, cause on our county roads...
You said that he would, he could provide the sign if we wanted to just go with the ordinary ones?
But only on, only on Tech Dot roads? So that's not all of them. We have seven that we need. According to council vote, they voted in seven areas, so there would not, there would be a lack of, um, continuity if we have, we had to have to choose something.
Well, Tech Dot roads would be fifteen sixty-five and nine eighty-six, right?
And there was three signs.
Thirty-four eighty-six.
No, there's three signs.
And thirty-four eighty-six.
Yeah, there's three signs, Tech Dot, and then four, um, that would be, um, county roads.
Well, I may be crazy, but I'd go with the free ones where you can, especially given our upcoming budget.
Okay, so two hundred and seventy-two dollars, or at the, at the highest, is not gonna break the bank, but... All right, Pat, uh, Patrick Smith? Lori Rasmussen?
Okay, I'm not sure if everybody actually goes or comes from, you know, like, Union Valley, but there is already a great big Poetry sign that way. So I don't know where your uniformity's coming from, or where you think it's been, but it's a great big sign, says Poetry Six Miles. Okay? So are you gonna shrink it? Because it's not uniform.
That's outside of our town, though.
You know? I personally like, I like one A.
You know, I personally like, I like 1A. You know, we're trying to stay with a quaint, small-town feel. You know, I see where some people might like the boring little Terrell. Who wants to go to Terrell? I try to avoid the place. Of course, you want an ugly little sign. Of course, that makes Poetry look inviting. Okay? I like it because, you know, whenever you want a nice, cute place to go, you have cute signs. That's what California does. I'm not saying, then you wanna go to California, I got out of there. But I'm just saying, the little signs are for boring places. Cute signs are for nice. We already have big signs telling you where Poetry is. This would be replacing what we already have, telling us where we are.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, council members, have any thoughts on the matter?
You know, the other, I, I think whatever we do, Tara, it should be consistent, whether it's on state roads, county roads, private roads, right? It should be the same. You shouldn't see different signs. But I have issue on the ones that have the population, because I'm just not convinced that we know that's the correct number. And we're still arguing over voter lists and residents and other things. So I'm fascinated that there's a number there, but I'm not confident at all that that's the right number.
Well, and that's can be easily modified out. So that's just a, I mean, it can actually fit one more line, so that can be, um, a lot of, you know, and that does age the sign. Because we hope it won't change, but it probably will over time. We could just leave the population off. But we do get that question quite a bit, and that is the official number. But with time, that will probably change, and that would age the sign. So if we wanna just leave the bottom two lines, Established 2020, Founded 1845, maybe the council would rather have that. So, did everyone, I don't know if you guys saw that one?
Are we paying by character, as far as?
No. No, it's just...
As, as far as the established, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the Funded 1845. But if we're not paying by character, could we go with, instead of Established Incorporated? So it's, that way, that's the official term of what we did. We turned it into an official Incorporated town. Now, that still gives, I think, a heavier...
What do you think about the population?
I, I think scratching the population, that's just signing people up to do more expense on the sign in the future, in my opinion.
Brian, are you saying change the word Established to Incorporated?
That, that's my suggestion. It, it, I think then it gives more historical, uh, it gives more weight to the, the history of the town.
Are you more interested in 1 or 1A? Then, I mean, they have different colors, but since our, one of our town colors was green, I mean, they have, they have red and blue. But I thought since we have green and purple as our town, kind of on our seal, these were the two choices that had green in it. So there's a cream, there's cream with green, or there is green with cream. So, I think at night, this one would be harder to see. And that one, to me, looks more like, um, uppity or something. I don't know.
First of all, I agree with Brian, is take off the population, put in Incorporated. And I would go with a solid green one. I think it shows up better. But, I mean, it's either way. That would be my vote.
You know, I guess, I would take, take us back for a minute, Tara, to how this started months ago. So we had citizens that couldn't figure out where Poetry was. And so we said we were gonna put some boundary signs up, right? And I guess to Lori's point that she just made a few moments ago, and this is my bias, and I've been transparent about it. I don't want Poetry to be inviting to people that don't live in Poetry. And I'm already sold on it, because I live here. So I would be in favor of something that simply says, you know, Town of Poetry Limits or something. You know, that, that takes care of, here's the boundary, right? This is where it starts. And that's it, and not announcing or serving any other purposes.
Okay, um, so...
Well, I guess I would, Mike, I would say, it's kind of a, a history buff myself. I do like the idea of saying the, when it was incorporated and when it was founded.
Well, and we can do that. We can have, just like historical markers, we can put signage all over town that has nothing to do with where the boundary is. I mean, I thought this venture was to establish where the boundary is for people that aren't carrying a map around with them, right? The trash people and others. So they can see, okay, when I cross this line, I'm gonna be in the Town of Poetry.
But why, why not do that all at once? I mean, it'd be an extra expense to do an historical marker. I mean, you have the opportunity, you're gonna have to dig a hole in the ground, put concrete in, put the poll in, go to that effort. I mean, the signs aren't that expensive. They, they are like $36 apiece.
And I, I guess I would raise, Mike, the point that, Brian, people already know we're here. It's not a matter of shutting the doors. It's here. So I, to me, the one that says when it's founded and when it was incorporated, and, and leave off the population, because that is gonna change with time, is, to me, that's fine, and I like it. I like the historical significance of it.
Well, that's fine. I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna beat you out of your opinion, Tom, nor are you me, but I'm just not a decorator.
Alright, so we do have, we do have this one that is more simple, but it, but a gas, it has, it has the words welcome. So, there might be some naysayers that don't want that. So if we just basically label it Town of Poetry, and then like you're saying, Incorporated 2020, Founded 1845, for the history buffs, and we do get that question. That might be kind of helpful.
So what's the cost of the hardware and poles on the other four? If we're gonna provide three of these to the state, the other four's gonna have added expense?
Um, so, we bought poles from the last venture on these signs. So, I don't recall.
I guess the poles are gonna be purchased regardless, but...
I don't recall, honestly, but it's what, so we'd have to buy four of the poles?
Well, I agree pretty much with what's been said. Let's do have the Established and the Founded. I mean, that's part of our town pride there. I would go with either the green or the purple to keep it
The purple?
With the seal, with the seal. Yeah, it's funny, you mentioned the purple, but that's something I'd given a thought to.
You want purple?
Not necessarily.
Oh.
Not necessarily, but those are the two Kellys that I can be convinced of. I definitely wouldn't go with the cream.
Do you like the tractor one, or do you like one of the other ones?
Well, I hate to say I like the tractor one, because I know how much...
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I ran out of time.
I don't hate it, I just, it's a decoration.
I'd like the agrarian side of it. I want it to convey, you know, who we are. When we are established and founded, we're agrarian, so I hope developers take note of that. Maybe it'll just be something subconscious that we're not Terrell, we're not urbanites.
How about a pitchfork? I'd go for a pitchfork.
So it wasn't one of their choices, their, their, their free choices were a tractor and a few other things. So, um, in this, in the packet, I didn't have the tractor, that, because, again, that's like from three meetings ago or something, too. And I was just trying to, um... So I kinda liked the tractor, too, Simeon.
I'd like to stay away from the tractor. The tractor's on your business and on your website, and I don't want any subliminal messaging.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I guess I, I would also just point out, as a history buff, 1845 was also the year Texas was founded as a state. Not as a nation, but as a state. So I like the significance of saying 1845.
Okay, so, is everyone, how many of you agree that you want to have Founded 1845 on there? Okay, is that, is that everyone to kind of agree on that? Well, we kinda need divide and conquer here, 'cause, um, so, I, I'm getting like at least four nods, I think. And then what about Incorporated 2020? How many of you agree with that? Okay, um, so the Town of Poetry, um, the color, the green background with the cream outline? Is that the one that most of you are liking?
And we're chopping the population, right?
And getting rid of the population, because that does age it and make us have to go back and buy another one. Who knows how soon? Okay, so, do we have a motion to accept this as we've been talking about?
I make a motion, we accept what we're talking about, quote.
Okay, so we have a motion by Anderson to accept the green sign with the cream outline stating the Town of Poetry Incorporated 2020, Founded 1845. Is there a second? Seconded by Simeon White, thank you. And all those in favor? And that passes, um, three to, or, excuse me, four, and you're abstaining?
No, I'm a nay.
Okay, four to zero, and Benson is negative. Okay.
And Jaffe is two.
Jaffe's negative two?
I'm a no.
Three to two, okay, alright. You know, we normally have five and oh, so, you know, let's spice it up. We're three and two. Alright, so, um... Number three. Alright, number four, we have discuss and consider the resolution adopting a policy regarding whom constitutes a town resident for purposes of voting in town elections. Alright, so, um, this resolution is a resolution of the Town Council, the Town of Poetry, Texas, adopting a policy regarding whom constitutes a town resident for the purposes of voting in town elections, providing for the incorporation of premises and providing an effective date. Whereas the Town Council desires to establish a policy and clarification, the definition of resident, for the purposes of voting in town elections. This basically says on down here, a person shall be considered a resident of the Town of Poetry, Texas, for municipal voting purposes if their domicile is situated on property, any part of which that touches the Town of Poetry town limits, or on an adjacent tract of land to property touching the town limits that is managed as a single contiguous tract of land. Federal and state election laws also apply and may affect a resident's ability to vote in town elections. So this definition, to the best of my understanding, coincides with each election division of each county. We did talk with them. They follow the Secretary of State guidelines, and this is very similar to what they are doing currently.
Now, wouldn't you say we talked to them? What do you mean by that? Do you mean you talked to them? Because I also gave them some calls and talked to them, and from what I discussed with them, they didn't seem as pleased about this document. They had some problems with it, so, did you talk to them?
Who did you talk with?
I talked with Judge Howell, I talked with Judge Stovall, and I talked with both of the secretaries
So I talked with Jeannie...
of the election divisions. I also talked...
Jeannie Ash? Okay, so Jeannie Ash, now actually, I talked with a lady who'd been there like 24 years. She's there part-time now, and the definition that she gave me was very similar to this.
It is similar, but it has some, it has some language in here that's especially worrying. And we do just have to talk, this just has to be something that we have to talk to the, possibly the Secretary of State about. Because our definition includes people that aren't in the town proper. And although that's what we want, admittedly, we wanna give people the right to vote, especially with Kaufman County dividing up the land into two parcels. That means everybody in that second parcel is just barely behind the lines, wouldn't be allowed to vote by Kaufman's definition. But the problem is that Kaufman County does follow the standard. That means they can't set policies or accept anything that isn't accepted on a state level. And their, their voter roll doesn't originate from them, at least according to both the election divisions. It actually originates from the state. So they have very little power over that. They can add people to the voter roll, but only based off of their definition. So they would have to change theirs, which they're not allowed to do, because it's all one. So the only way out of this that I see, or the only two ways, is either to talk to the Secretary of State, which is what both the judges and both of the election division suggested. Or it might be, and I haven't looked into this deep, it might be that we can go with somebody else to do the voting, possibly, besides the counties. Maybe a private organization. I don't know much about that. I haven't gotten contact. Counties didn't know much about that. But more or less, because this includes people who lay their head down or in, and are in domiciles that are outside the town proper, the counties aren't allowed to use this as their definition and won't...
Well, then why is John Porter, okay, he's in Kaufman County, but he was allowed to vote in the last three elections? And hi, his definition fits this one?
And it also runs contrary to what I've heard from legal counsel, that we could basically allow anybody to vote. Not that I'm saying we should, I'm saying, you know, anybody in the county or anybody in the state, basically. So that, we, we need clarity on that.
But I think Simeon has uncovered that we can do that, but then we have an obligation to take care of all of our own elections and other things, which I don't think we wanna do.
Agreed.
I'd like to speak on this. I'm confused why we have a resolution, because we've never agreed to this. We've paid attorney fees now for this, because in the last regular council meeting, I wanted to speak in opposition to y'all's definition, but I was ruled out of line and out of order, even though we're defined on the residence. So I would like that opportunity to, to discuss the opposition to what y'all have written. And furthermore, I will, I will call for a vote on the Quorum and policy if I'm dishonorably denied this opportunity to, to oppose y'all again. So, what I'd like to say is, is on the residence, it starts back in incorporation. We hired an attorney to represent the incorporation effort, and that attorney decided at that time that the best definition would be if the domicile touched the city limit. So, to support that, uh, argument, my house, the line on County Road 2430, and only that section of 2430 was moved to 511 feet, because I was out of the town. I wanted to be in the town, so they said, okay, we'll move the line so it touches your house. So that supports that argument that your domicile had to be in the city limits during incorporation. So to further support this argument of resident voters and the definition of it, pre-incorporation, there was a text message sent, I, Tara, to a citizen that I will redact for their protection. Says, "I wanna communicate to you and your husband that you are not in the town proper. While you don't get a vote, neither do you pay potential taxes." Following three days later, it says, "It looks like your house is at least 500 feet or more," referring to the distance of the domicile to the center of the road. Further, it goes on to say, "Everyone in the blue zone are in the town limits. If your home is in the blue, you get a vote." These are rules that, that were implied during incorporation, guys.
Yes, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Well, don't interrupt, I got more. So then in a social media post from you to a resident, they asked you about their house. You says Buena Vista isn't in the town proper. It is in the ETJ. Did you happen to check your exact address on Citizen for Poetry? If your exact address isn't listed, then it's not on the ballot. So again, there, there was a list. I've looked into citizensforportery.com, it's been removed. And whoever owned that domain also paid Wix extra money to keep it from being known who owned that domain. But there was a list on, on some website that allowed voters. Brian, you should be familiar with this, because you, you also, uh, on that same social media website, you had a discussion with a guy asking, uh, he was assuming he was out because, because of his address. And you also said that that was a, a valid assumption. If you would like to know for sure, you can go to the website, Citizens for Poetry. Just halfway down, you'll see links for Hunt residents and Kaufman residents. These have lists of those who will be voting. You can look up your address there. So there were lists that were, are established for incorporation at one point. You know, and, and that guy that you replied to, Brian, if you remember, he was saying that he didn't receive anything in the mail, so he assumed that he was not in the Town of Poetry. Do you remember all that?
I replied to a lot of people, so I don't specifically remember, but it sounds right.
So that being said, though, I didn't receive anything in the mail either. So who received things in the mail during incorporation? But if we had that list of mailers, maybe that would help us define a citizen as well.
So I don't understand.
So since the last meeting, since the last meeting, we've been provided two more legal supporting documents. Y'all had these. A warranty deed and an easement. We passed the easement tonight, passed the warranty deed last night. These were, these are legal documents that we paid our attorney firm to write for us with legal descriptions of properties. I wanna, I wanna point these out, if y'all don't have them with me. I want to, I want to point these out, if y'all don't have them with me, y'all can go back and look, but I'll read them verbatim. On the warranty deed, it says-
I'm sorry, this is off topic.
No, this is not off topic. We're talking about where the voter lines lie.
The logic is that he, he would like to see an official documentation of what the boundaries are.
So we're defining them right here by legal, right? So our legal says a property, and here's the legal description of that property that we just obtained with a generous donation. Said portion contains all the areas of the dominant tract within the territorial jurisdiction of the Town of Poetry, as measured 311 feet from the center of the county road. Territorial jurisdiction. Flip over to the easement agreement, guys. Under the easement property, another legal definition, it says that that easement terminates at a point of 311 feet from the center line of the county road, more importantly, in parentheses, where the territorial limits of the Town of Poetry end. Territorial limits, guys. So now we have territorial jurisdiction written by our attorneys, territorial limits where Poetry ends. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what's best, you know, because I want inclusivity too, because people get to protect their, their future property taxes. But I ask y'all this question right here, because that, that really made me think, who are we protecting by allowing all these votes? Are y'all okay with letting someone who is outside our territorial jurisdiction pass, pass laws during election, i.e. P&amp;Z? Who can, you know, your lot sizes, all that, they, they can vote on that. Are y'all okay with those guys regulating those inside the 311 feet? And telling them what they can do when it won't affect where their domicile sits? But more importantly, on, on the property taxes, they're probably inevitable. I don't want them, nobody wants them. But I did just a little bit of basic math, and this is simple, guys. Average city tax for cities in Hunt County, y'all can verify this if you want to, is .56%. Not much, .56%. If you have a domicile that's not in the town, so my neighbors whose house is behind the 311 feet, if they have just one acre of road frontage, and we value that land at $20,000, you know what their tax is going to be? $112. Now, let's take my house. We'll, we'll just say, "An average house out here is $400,000." Put it inside that city limit. That tax goes to $2,352. Do you think it's fair for those outside the 311 to tax those that's inside the 311? I mean, you really need to think about this, guys, and where you're talking about who the voters are.
You're right. That's a very good point. It is a very good point.
So your, does your point boil down, Terry, to you want the entire domicile to be inside the town limits?
A portion is what was used for incorporation, and I think we could stick with that.
Okay, not, not adjoining a parcel that adjoins a, right.
A portion of your domicile needs to be within the territorial jurisdiction-
Right, so if it just catches the corner of your house or whatever, just any piece of the structure.
And that's what we had to use for incorporation, to grab that person. If not, we would've went 30 feet inside the property lines and went from Terrell to Roy City, right? Because we don't have to have a domicile. The domicile was important during incorporation, so it needs to be important now.
And what I was reiterating was pretty much the same thing, but on the legal basis, he's saying, he thinks that's right, but it looks like it wouldn't be legal for us to do anything other than that unless we get a special exemption with the Secretary of State, is that the most inclusivity we can have is if part of their domicile touches, then they can vote. But that is going to chop out a lot of people, and I don't want to see that.
So it has nothing to do with the land? If your house sets back beyond the line, you're not in, period?
And it boils down to the taxes.
Okay, so-
Why would you not vote for it if he was outside? Why would you not vote for a higher tax rate? Because it's not going to affect you.
But to your point, not to belabor the conversation, but it seems like we've had two or three different standards over the last couple of years, right? For the election, for incorporation, and now for this, we're trying to establish a second or third standard.
But we've never decided it, that's what we're doing.
No, I agree, I agree, but it's just-
My question is, okay, since we're deciding, I guess we're deciding at this juncture going forward, can that be amended at some time in the future? Because I'm, I'm calculating, so we have zero property tax right now. There are 36 municipalities in the state of Texas that have zero property tax. That's the goal for this, it has been the goal for this council, as far as I know. And, but even at .15, which many, many municipalities do a very small .15, time, a $250,000 piece of real estate, that would be $375 a year.
But the county average is .56.
Okay, so-
That's more local. We're not talking about west-
Which county, though?
Hunt County.
Okay, so we have lots of people in Kaufman County, too, so, but I mean, there are plenty of municipalities that have a very, do have a low, low tax rate, and-
And those municipalities are also encouraging businesses to come in, et cetera. We're, we're kind of unique, and I don't think that it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
So it is something to discuss and think about, but I, I don't think at this point we have zero property tax. I don't know that all that, it is something to think about, but I'm not sure that applies right now. Is it something that we can-
Well, I think we have to be forward-looking, and I, I've come to the, the same conclusion as Terry, and reluctantly, but by much different routes. And to Mike's point, you know, we, we had one set of rules, then we had another set of rules, and another set of rules, and I was actually talking to Terry about-
I think there was only two. There was incorporation-
Okay, the rules have changed.
And then the subsequent two elections were uniform, I believe.
Okay, the rules have changed, and we're now proposing changing the rules again. And Terry and I did have a conversation a while back, and I was like, you know, that, that sounds weird, but you know, we grew up in our parents' households, then we became parents ourselves, or at least married ourselves, and the rules changed, because we moved from one set of rules to another set of rules. All of those rules are valid at the time, but that doesn't mean that we have to necessarily stick 100% to what they were. Now, this is one of the challenges that I have as a council member, is that I, as Brian, Vincent, the resident, I think everybody here who's subject to taxation, potential taxation, should have a vote on it. That's, that's just one of my core philosophies. However, I was voted in to represent the town, and the, the town is the people, as Simeon and I have talked, you know, but it also extends beyond the people. It, it extends to the organization, it extends to the rules, it extends more than just the people. So this is one of those places where I, I disagree with myself, and I, but I have to vote for what I believe is right for the town. And for me, what is right for the town is making sure that the people who are subject to the rules, the town, of the town are the ones who are being taxed, and the ones that are being taxed are subject to the rules of town. And then, if you're outside the town, you don't get to make decisions for the people who are inside the town.
That's right.
Well, okay, so getting perspective here, okay, so it's about 30 domiciles which fall into that category that he's referring to. That is only about 4%.
That's according to, even, I'm just going to stipulate that that's correct.
I think that would be something to research.
But, but even if it is correct-
Doesn't make a lot of one person.
Well, but you're using the, hey, can I finish?
Sure.
Okay, so you're, you're allowing the exception to make the rule. So if it, we, we know that it is around 30 homes that fall into that, they're outside the 311 feet, or the 400, or the 511, so they're outside that area. So it's 30 homes out of 689 homes approximately. Now, we may need to go back and look at that, but it's not the majority. We're definitely aware that it's not the majority.
So what is, what is your, what is your number, Terry?
Well, do you have, if you have definitive data-
I'm not going to do this, because our attorneys are looking into it.
Okay.
So I, I, but regardless, if it's 30 homes, we'll take the money off. That's, that's huge to me, too. But like Brian said, we're fixing to pass P&amp;Z. Should, should anybody who lives outside the city be able to tell me how many, how many dog houses I could have, how many, how tall my grass is? It's not affecting those people that could potentially vote. Keep it inside those that can vote, and that's effective.
Well, and, you know, right now, it seems inconceivable, but there is the potential that a condo could be, a community could be built on territory that touches our town. So we could have 200 to 2,000 people in one of what's now a field, that could then outnumber the entirety of the residents of the town. Again, it's inconceivable, it's, it's an outlier, but it is a possibility, and we need to be thinking more beyond what we have today, and especially if we want to preserve what we have today, we have to be thinking defensively about our future.
Well, and voting nationally, as I think about it, because I'm kind of arguing with myself too, Brian, has been based on where you live, not where you own property, or we would be voting all over the place. It's where you live, where do you lay your head down at night? So I think it seems a little weird, because if somebody owns hundreds of acres in the Town of Poetry but doesn't live on them, they're not going to get a say. They're just going to have to go along and get along, but I guess that's kind of the way it works at a national level anyway. So we, you know, we would be redefining what's a longstanding national standard for voting if we tried to do something. You know, to me, we need to scrub this against, I appreciate Simeon doing the research against the Secretary of State, because I'm, I, we've got a topic on the deal later where we got kind of slammed to the mat, and I don't think we need a second one, so I don't think we should vote on something that we know from the start has holes in it.
How do you go wrong with setting the boundary, the voter boundaries? That, Terrell doesn't extend past that, who can vote? They have a territorial jurisdiction. How can you go wrong with placing the voters inside that territorial jurisdiction? You can't.
Well, it would, we wouldn't be able to include lots of people in the territorial jurisdiction, as they have to have it in the town proper.
You're talking about ETJ?
No, I'm saying the territorial jurisdiction of the town, not the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Oh, okay, yeah, now I see what you're saying. And I think for one reason or another, we all want to scrap this, either because it's not legal, or because we don't like it. So I don't see where further discussion is, we can, yeah. We can go to the Secretary of State, we've got a long night, so much-
I just have one more follow-up on it, though, because, Mr. Jaffe, as you were talking about, you know, we, we have tradition nationally of, of how we set voter boundaries. The difference here is that people have the opportunity, not saying you want to take it, but if you are on a piece of property that is close to the boundary and you want your vote heard, you can always appeal to bring in enough of your property to get a vote.
So Terry, I'll belabor it more. So Terry, what if it simply said, "If any part of their domicile lies within the town boundary"?
And I think that's what it should say.
Okay, so currently, the last two elections, it's been broadened to allow anyone who has any part of their property in the town proper would get to vote. So I think you would have a huge upset if people are no longer allowed to vote, then.
Keep in mind, though, that no matter what happens, even if that is the case, which, from me talking to the election divisions, that isn't, even if part of their property is in the town proper, but they're residents, the domicile, their house, is not, they can't vote. Only if their house is within the Town of Poetry.
That's the opposite of what, of what Hunt County, yeah.
Let me jump in and say that even if that is the case, even if you're right, because they've split up those parcels in Kaufman, without a doubt, those people won't be able to vote, that are behind and now have a different property ID now, because they are not even on the same piece of property that's in the town anymore. So you're going to have-
Well, actually, she told me that it didn't matter, like, those things didn't matter.
Well, I had just talked with them today, and they said it did, so I don't know what-
So who, who did you speak to, Kaufman, Kaufman County?
With Kaufman, I think it was, let me look at my notes.
Did you speak with Tandy Smith?
But splitting, to that point, Simeon, splitting the, the parcel doesn't move the house.
It doesn't?
I mean, the house is still in the same location, right? So if it was in, it's in, if it was out, it's out. I mean, it doesn't say, our definition would be violated by the parcel split that Kaufman did, but the definition that any part of your domicile is in the town you're in, I mean, we didn't move their house.
Right.
So their house is still either touching the line or not touching the line.
But as far as for, I, I-
It sounds like we need to get more information and come back.
I think we know where we are.
We'll, we'll definitely have to revisit this.
Well, I want to urge y'all to read the memo that was sent by our attorneys that we can't discuss, because they asked us not to. We asked our, our attorneys to help us with four questions. One of those was voting in a municipal election and running for office. These were all sent to y'all on March 15th, 2022. I need y'all to review that, because it clearly says that we will be the ones that decide those voters.
And I will say that, I read that too, I rewrote it, I brought it to date, it did seem, it seemed to indicate that we could, but I also know, recently, our attorneys have been wrong. And to be honest, to be honest, I trust the election division more. We've got two separate counties that do it full-time, every day, they're experts in this specific field. Our attorneys just looked into it.
Okay, so we have some residents who want to speak. Chad West, Kenzie Salisbury?
Okay, so I have quite a few notes here. So let me like kind of get through them, and then we can, because I don't want to waste up my time. So we talked about, you know, property taxes and the voting for that. So is it going to be where if a town sets it, if a county is less than that, is that going to hit us kind of like how it is later on? Does that make sense? Like, I don't want our property tax, like, it can be more than what the county sets it as?
It would be other than what the county sets, so if the county has a rate, and then-
On top of.
Okay, so it wouldn't be like how the, the thing later on we're going to talk about is, correct? Okay. And then the next thing is, I am all for Simeon reaching out to the Secretary of State for verification, because as we've seen, our lawyers have been incorrect on quite a few things. Also, as far as the definition of the residency and who could vote during that incorporation thing, like Terry mentioned, y'all were referring people to the Citizens of Poetry. Do y'all know whose website that was and where they got those lists? Like, because I don't think that the, whenever somebody would go on and pick their address, it was sending them to a government website. Like, I think it was sending them to some role. So who put that role up there? Do y'all know?
The Citizens for Poetry was a political action committee.
Okay, and who was on that?
I would have to go back and look at, I think it was about 20 different people. I was on that.
Okay. And then something that's very frustrating is, we've seen online, you talk about how sometimes it's good to protect the majority in giving them, like, for example, Terrell coming, but then when it comes to this, it's like, "Oh, it's only 30 houses, or so many houses are off the road." You know, it's not that many. Well, when it comes to Terrell coming in, compared to the map of Poetry, it's not that many, but it matters. So it should matter here also. Oh, and then also, when it changed from incorporation to these other elections, who made that change? Like, who said, "Okay, it's okay now to let all of these people vote"?
My understanding is the county, each county decided that, the elections division decided that.
So the county reached out to y'all and said, "We couldn't, they can't vote now, but now they can"?
I, I didn't have any say in that. They just, they said that the, the original attorney, of course, on the incorporation, he had one view. The attorneys for each of the counties had a different view, and they went with their attorney's view on that.
Okay, and do y'all have any documentation where the counties had reached out to the, that attorney, and that said, "This is where those lines are, this is who can vote and who can't vote"?
I don't know if I, I don't know.
To support those reasonings of why that was changed going forward?
I mean, that was, the elections division consulted the Secretary of State, they also consulted the attorneys for each county.
Okay, so this is just more reasoning of why we need to go to the Secretary of State to verify everything, because one lawyer's told us bad information, and now we have some others that are questionable as well.
Thanks, Kenzie.
Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Lori Ross Smith? Okay, alright. Okay, so I guess we have some research to-
I make a motion, we table this for-
Later.
Further research.
I second it.
Can you follow up with the Secretary of State as an action?
Absolutely.
And try to come up with, maybe you, on the fly, propose some language with them that would pass muster, bring that back, and then we'll consider that.
I'll do what I can.
Okay, got a motion.
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor of researching this further and bring it back? That passes unanimously? Okay. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. And as a point of order, if you would like to sign up to speak to-
Hey, we're talking our own crap, that's embarrassing.
The agenda-